October eighth, twenty twenty five, the order. Welcome all. The minutes of the September seventeen meeting have been have been published. Any questions, comments? The only thing I seen was under John Markey. The last sentence there, they're supposed to reach out to Baker Tilly to set the rate.
Oh, s- okay.
I think it probably just get the rate or get the.
It was supposed to be get the rates. If I'm correct.
Okay, with that correction. I believe the motion accept the minutes. I'll second that. Motion carries. Park Board would like to purchase planters. That you have in front of you. And the estimated price in it. Complaints and shipping?
Yeah, has two thousand four hundred and thirty one dollars. The park.
She's like the ones up on the.
Yeah.
But they're gonna be, they're gonna be a different color, they're, she's wanting to go brown instead of the gray that.
You can get hit with a, hit him with a card and spin him around circles.
Mm-hmm.
Well, you can't bank, that must be hit and turn.
Um, the park department in their landscaping budget for the year has forty eight hundred left in it for twenty twenty five. To allow for the, the new planters.
And maybe we'll go ahead and accept the price on the planters. I second that. And more. The motion carried. Do we have, I mean, we don't have approved the park board's purchases as it does anyway, do we?
Yeah, for these comes out years, yeah, you have the budget, or you have the funds for it.
Yeah, I thought that they purchased their own stuff. When it comes to two thousand dollars. Yeah. Okay. I know I had to do that. And you have a resolution twenty twenty five dash nine.
Yeah, this this arises from the community, uh, matching grant and the N dot application. In the past, in the past, uh, we've submitted the application and as I mean, they've reached out and asked for. Um, confirmation that you guys were authorized to sign the room, seeing this on the front end, and you're gonna include it with the application.
Yeah, they're requiring us to upload the actual resolution with the application instead of requesting it later. Online, so when we submit this application, we've got this, to go along with it.
Who threw up the resolution?
Well, we, we D L Z'd it, yeah.
Okay.
Is this a full document?
Yeah, it was a template they provided a few years ago.
Okay. Should read them by title?
Yes, by title.
All right, first reading of resolution twenty twenty five dash nine is the resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Gravel, Indiana. Concerning authorization for execution of certain agreements within the Indiana Department of Transportation. Do I have a motion to accept the first reading by title?
I make a motion to accept the first reading, resolution number twenty twenty five dash nine.
Second? Carry. Second reading by title only of resolution number twenty twenty five dash nine, the resolution. Of the Town Council of the Town of Gravel, Indiana concerning authorization for execution of certain doc agreements. Sorry, with the Indiana Department of Transportation. Do I have a motion to accept the second reading?
I make a motion to accept the second reading of resolution number twenty twenty five dash nine.
Second? Carry. Okay, I will open it up to a public discussion if there is any on the resolution, comments, concerns at this time. Okay, if there aren't any, I will read the third reading for adoption of resolution number twenty twenty five dash nine. Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Gravel, Indiana concerning authorization for execution of certain agreements. With the Indiana Department of Transportation, do I have a motion to accept the third and final meeting, or meeting reading?
I make a motion, we accept the third and final reading of resolution number twenty twenty five dash nine.
I will second that. So carry.
And you just want, well, one copy for, second hand, one copy for D L Z.
Okay.
These two I hear are some of the closest.
Yeah.
I don't think that goes with. So I have to carry it. That last one, carry or?
Yes.
The last one's just a notary page.
This does not need to be revised, there's not need to be revised. Uh, D L Z, where do you have for us today?
All right, I'll go through everything, um. Quick updates on the water projects. Um. The water plant vacation, um, still pending on that level four T C report. Water tower itself, coordination with contractors ongoing, um, check valves gonna be needed, fire station hydrant. And we're still coordinating through that. Um. We still have the contingency funds left over, um. And, um. We're still putting together options and projects for use of those contingency funds. Um. As far as the trail, uh, final walkthrough was completed on September twenty fifth and Fleming is working through those punch list items. And then we've requested a quote from specialties for different options, um, bollards, stop, parking stops, parking bumpers, things like that. For, um, down there around the gas station, as you guys requested. Uh, we haven't gotten those back yet. Uh, the ARPA projects, sewer projects, uh, A P I has started down there on Roth, or at Gravel and Roth. Uh, as far as the paved roads, sewer extension, most of the drilling's complete, um. And we're waiting on a proposal request for the deeper gravity sewer, um. Sewer lining has started, they hope to be completed this week. Sorry, sewer cleaning was done this week, they're expected to be completed this week, the lining will start in the next week. Um, and then late October starts to, uh, start date for the lift station projects. Uh, as far as the street project, Weston, Illinois, uh, final walkthrough on those is pending. Um, and then the twenty twenty five streets, uh, first street, we have, uh. As far as the schedule, they're planning on paving tomorrow, right up front here, um, that'll be base and surface. Um, hoping for stamped concrete to be finished up on Friday, uh, and then pavement markings and seating the following week. Uh, so, good majority of that will be done this week. And with that, we do have one pay application, number four, from Brooks. In the amount of one hundred five thousand forty eight dollars and eighty seven cents. So we made a motion for that payment.
I make a motion to go ahead and pay the one oh five, hundred five thousand and forty eight dollars and eighty seven cents.
I'll second that. Motion carried.
Got a question for you, Todd. The fencing that was around the fruit of home, they broke the front of it when they put the new sidewalk to curb in. Is there contingency money in that for to repair that fence and put it back?
Um.
Or did something? I don't know how big your responsibility would be.
My question came is, they broke it, they should be fixing it.
Well, it kinda got broke during the project.
Well, but.
Who broke it?
The question, if it's not in the scope of work.
When they had to cut the road back out, it was right at the edge of this, the street right here was in the way, because they moved it over a little bit, so that whole rail right here got yanked out anyway, so.
Was it on our easement, or was it in the easement, or is it on private property?
The, the question comes, the, my question get it, is it in the bid package that they're, if they took it out, they had to replace it, or?
It was not part of the plans to replace that fence.
When we moved the road over, should, was it in the zone then, or when they just didn't want to broke it?
We didn't, well, we didn't move the road over, it went back where it was, but they needed to overcut slightly. To be able to put the curb back in. So, the conversation I recall having out there was that it's close enough, it's just, just yank it out.
It was bad shape.
It was.
We got four, we took it apart today, what was left, and we got four good pieces out of it. So we put those on the back for, uh, Rich, he wanted for the back fencing, but I didn't know if there was money to replace it, or you guys, when we called fence company to replace it, or whose responsibility is, so. I can get a couple of fence bids and see what it costs and then figure out what we're supposed to pay for, I guess.
This is a split, split rail thing, right?
Yeah.
Is there, is there, the contingency money can be used for that?
Uh, you can't. Let me look into what we can do.
Okay, how bad's that gonna look, Wilmer, with just a few of those brand new split rails compared to the rest of that being ratty?
That was my question.
Well, you got the front piece and you got the whole back piece.
Well, I looked at, yeah, I thought they should, they wrecked their crap out of things, and even to do that, they gotta replace it all. Because, you know, they could have done that project without tearing that off to pieces. They can't tell me they can't, cause I work with quotes, stuff like that too, and, you know, that's crazy. I mean, they had ripped it clear back to the building.
Sometimes though, we barely touched it and fell apart, so.
Well. I don't care if it's double part or what.
You know, Rich was like, I'm, I'm surprised that much of it stayed up, so, I mean, it was in pretty bad shape, so I don't know what, we gotta, we gotta put it back.
Yeah, we're gonna get it back.
Put the damage and coil replacement. We'll deal with who's paying for it when we get right.
Well, we, we can, we can figure it out.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
I'll get some quotes, we'll get figured out.
If I thought, if it was that bad, it should have been replaced anyway, I think. That was, you know.
Well, the problem is, if you wouldn't have touched it, it'd been there in like ten years, that's the problem.
Yeah, that's, I, a hundred percent.
Even, I don't care how rotten it was, so.
So if you can find out contingency funds, if something can be used, that would.
I will see what I come up with.
Or if. Or Brooks wanna pay for the whole thing, that's even better.
Yeah, doubt that, but, uh.
But I, I think if, if they pay a portion of it. Because it's all, you know, I mean, I, I'm not gonna say there, say they gotta pay the whole thing and just.
Brand new fence.
But, anytime you damn near something like we've ways, paid a portion of it, and that adds no more right. The fair doesn't have the money to replace that crap, I'm telling you.
I know, we could, we could have removed it before, it was smashed to pieces.
Tried to remove it when it was there, but it went apart, I'm telling you. They had screws and nails and roofing bolts and punch strips and.
We do what we can, we gotta do what we have to do to keep things running.
I know.
There's no money, like, you think there's.
I, I, I'm not, I'm just saying.
I know, it's, all kinds of screws and bolts we put in there to hold it up.
Todd?
Um. We're still reviewing scenarios for, uh, water connections and fire production, um, as well as new connections in the north. Uh, we'll have that this week. Uh, coordination with, uh, City of Fort Wayne on sanitary, um. Eric, appears there was a broken chip on the new meter. And they were going to replace that either today or Friday.
Well, in the last week, we've got Pedro down to manual floats because we got a, something in our communications is missing from telling our transducer and our leveller to run it. We've been trying to figure it out for a week, we've isolated it down to one isolated box, it's pretty rare to find, we found it on eBay, it should be here in a couple of days. The factory are three to four weeks out, it'll give us a couple here. Until then, Fort Wayne tried to come in today to put their chip in the meter, make sure their side was working, I didn't want them touching anything because we have the station running. I didn't wanna take a chance on anything getting crosswired or touched, messed with, cause I spent a night here lab, not just knowing.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time here on that station.
I looked twenty hours overtime in two days, and just trying to keep it running and try out a couple of things, and, but she's running, she track it every day. But until we get this new box in, we can't see if there's something else wrong. We've taken everything out from this station and put it over in Main Street, and it all works fine. When we get it back over here, there's something to do with the connection, it's just not letting it go through. Which tells it to go from floats to the transducer. So, hopefully we get this isolated box in, and hopefully go back to normal.
Just want to tend to coordinate with the city on getting their things repaired on their side.
Okay.
Um, and then, um. Finally, as far as the application will work, um. For next year's project, um, we adopted the resolution, so that's good, and then, uh, work with Stephanie on making that, uh, application filled out and submitted on time. That's all I got, any questions?
Yes. Um, on the third street, walkthrough you're pending, the final, they realize that there's a lot of, we've been having the discussion, there's a lot of bad sod. If that's too late in the season, they realize they're gonna be sitting on that retainer until spring, when they can come back and get to it, I assume. Because there's a lot of that that's gonna have to be, was not, the second time around was not put down right, there were a lot of areas they skipped over and didn't bother doing, so. That's when we needed to walk sometime back when we initially talked about it, and it just never has gone anywhere.
This part is, uh, West Street?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure they're aware of that, when they ask for that final walkthrough, that there's gonna be a bunch of that that needs fixed, and we're not gonna put it down in November when it's freezing cold, if we have to wait, then they're not gonna be too happy about that.
Yeah, um, that, it's gonna be a discussion, because remember they said, they wanted that waiver.
But this is stuff that we, but this is stuff that they put down, wasn't even put in right, and there's a whole bunch of areas they didn't even do, they skipped over.
Okay.
So I understand the stuff that was put in down in that area that probably shouldn't have been, because it was gonna get tore up, but the stuff down at the other end. It's, it wasn't in right from the time they walked away from it. And there's, like I said, there's a lot they didn't even do, they made a judgment call. That's what I'm more concerned with. What was the other thing? Oh, I have some pictures I'll send you of the trail that we didn't get when we walked through it. There's a twenty four foot crack that runs parallel down the sidewalk, that they had attempted to fix it one other time, you can see where it's all ground. And I mean, they ground through the seal down into the concrete, I've got a video of it, I've got a bunch of pictures, it's right down there between Save-A-Lot and the Dairy Suite. It's really bad. On the trail.
And that was not noted in the?
I don't, I don't think it was, it's, I know we numbered the one down there on Henry Street, isn't it Henry Street?
Henry Street.
But this one, I, and again, I never noticed it until I was looking, when it's not bright, cause we walk that thing in the middle of the day, bright and sunny.
Yeah.
You go down the aisle when it was kinda cloudy, and it, when you see the pictures, I'll show you.
Okay.
It jumps out at you. You probably should get a bolt, sorry, I'm gonna jump ahead of you, for a water main, little water mains right there at Save-A-Lot. There's ones I found are rolled off out to the side, there's no bolt that holds that down on there, by the telephone pole, just about that grand thing. Sorry. That's it for me.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Is the. What's left of the seating that they hydro seeded then, we talked about?
Yeah.
Good.
Yep, they hydro seed on the last, which there's only.
Yeah, just.
Just very little, most of this is our service.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, as well as touching up the river, uh, and let the bank, let the parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
So, but yes.
Okay.
I've got scene, we can, yeah, we can sign afterwards.
Very good.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Okay.
Ryan, Eric? Um, we just talked about the Pedro lift station out there, um, I'm not for sure what actually happened out there. Cause it was about two weeks ago, or it's been about two weeks now, that station just. I don't know if they got hit by that lightning storm that came through on that Thursday night, we didn't get much rain, but it's been one part after another. And it's very intermittent going on, they replaced stuff on Friday, it ran all weekend till Sunday evening, and it popped the breakers again. And then it'll do it for an hour, pop a breaker, run for two days, and then pop a breaker, and we keep changing parts out, because it's intermittent going on. Uh, and the parts we're changing out are what, they are bad, it, it, it works better for several days and it does it again. But we have run it now, the transducer is out, and there's the ma, the little module for the transducer that interprets it and sends a signal. That's the only thing left, that's, you know, that we haven't changed, uh, and we'll, that's, we lost the transducers, so we're running on floats in there, and that station, for some crazy reason, is only wired with two floats. So, you have an off float, you have an on float, alarm float, and lab float, it's the same float, that top float's the same one, he's getting alarmed about every fifteen, twenty minutes, on, off, for a week and a half now.
All right.
So, we know it's running, uh, actually, it's just the weekend, we know it's running, we changed the floats on Saturday morning, we changed the floats, uh, inside there, and put two new ones in so we can run. And it's been running since then with no issues, but just where, we have had a lot of issues with that being going on, which we've had nothing, and it seemed like after we had that, I don't know if it was Wednesday evening or Thursday, that, it was a weird storm, kinda came through with lightning. Ever since that's been there, we've had, we've been fighting this station, so, uh, hopefully, the transducers worked, they took them down to Main Street, and it worked, they worked fine down there, so we know where they, saying it's not working is working.
Both sides.
Yeah, so we, hopefully, this part comes in, we get us back at the full strength there, uh, well, one pump full strength, so we're waiting for the, the rehab of the station for the other side. We had it there, we just, it's got a hole in the pipe, so we just kinda aren't using it unless we have to, so. I know we've been fighting that down there, so, and, uh, thanks to the major issues, which we've been spending a lot of time there, so. Eric, so Eric, Eric spent the night here one night, so, cause it was about every fifteen minutes, about three o'clock in the morning, it was tripping itself, so. That's all I have on my, I have a bunch more stuff going on, but projects.
No, just, uh, the A P I's cooking out there. Um, we've actually found the water main, and we've never seen out there, so, they're gonna be way below it, but we were, actually, our G P S system's pretty close to, we're about a foot off. So, from where we thought it was, where the G P S system actually feeds it, so. That's a pretty good, pretty good finding today, other than that, we got, like I said, we're just waiting, everything on Pedro's done except for the extra stuff. And then the stations are bringing it all backwards, but, and it's such a part of being here cleaning line, getting ready for lighting next week, so. So they've been going up and down your little neighborhoods doing, cleaning out your sewer lines, it can't burn it.
Yeah. We made a pretty big issue with that.
No, I'm sure.
Cause I got the phone calls on that.
I've got phone calls.
Back, blown it out inside, yeah, they use a lot more pressure than I use, so, I use about two thousand, they're running about four or five thousand.
Here's, and here's my only concern, with that, never being put online or tagged on doors and stuff.
They were supposed to give warnings.
Right.
Yeah, they were supposed to put out letters that everybody wanted to be warned.
They didn't get, that whole street, nobody got anything. They skipped the whole street, and if I'd have been back there, if I'd have just been putting a toilet in. And, and I'm just saying, not knowing about it, like I'm redoing my whole bathroom and everything, that'd bug your head off. Nobody's gotta clean all the walls and everything, from what I was shown and told.
When I heard my man was behind my house, and when they clean out the man, it comes back through my toilet.
Yeah, they come back out, yeah, it'll suck the toilets right out too, when they go past, it'll suck all the water out.
Well, I believe they finished up today, and I believe line is coming in next week, so they, they should be all done, with everything.
Is that something we can, I mean, we've got that site, you know, in case something's put on a door, you don't see it on a door.
They were supposed to send out letters for toilet.
Yeah, we, we assumed they were going on the door, we, we.
Yeah, they were supposed to put doors in there, in everybody's door.
But yeah, we probably, probably should have posted on that site.
Cause I get the, I, it could be pulled off a door, and I wouldn't notice it for some reason, but if it's on that site, man, I get that alert all the time.
Well, if we, it's probably should be done, cause they go do the line, they're gonna ask people not to use their systems, for, so.
I love the idea of the letters and everything, but I think it's secondary ought to be.
Yeah, lots of, yeah, I think.
Not everybody's old like us, they like to see the paper, if they don't see it digital, they're not, somebody's not gonna catch it.
Yeah, we just have to stay up on what, what sections they're in, so we can post every day, they're gonna be doing that in some of the section.
Or if like Wilmer and Diana in Florida, and we do that, they're not gonna know it, if for some reason something was going on.
Yeah.
Stuff all.
At least they'd get the digital call, and have to call Clodderi and say, hey, tell them stop, I gotta get something fixed first.
And some buildings are figuring out if they have a trap or not too, I had Dr. Findout, she don't have one.
Straight pipe?
She got a bad smell in there, so.
But you could have them, or you could get ahold of Stephanie, and she can put it on.
Yeah, we could, yeah, we could.
They, they have access to it.
We could, yeah, we have access to it, yeah.
I just, I figured they mailed all the letters and gave everybody free warning, we're supposed to do all that, but.
They go.
Cause they run into this problem all the time, so they're supposed to get free warning.
Well, that, and I, I got several phone calls asking for a closer timeline, they said between this date and this date is when it's gonna happen. But they would have liked to know, hey, on this day, we're gonna be hitting this street, et cetera, et cetera.
On Thursday, we're gonna do wild wood.
Well, this, the schedule started out good, and it went crazy, and then it went good, and then it went crazy again, because Cameron kept getting. Well, this, the schedule started out good and it went crazy and then it went good and then it went crazy again because Cameron kept getting stuck, the truck broke down, so.
And then we stay on the lighting part, that, yeah, we'll ju- we can just make sure daily, we put something out daily, like, hey, they're, they're doing Burn Street.
I think that'd be great.
Between this street and that street, yeah, that way people are aware.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the banners, the banners come in?
They did, they're actually sitting in his office right now.
I've seen the pulls of it, so.
I gotta get a lift for a week.
Yeah.
Because I don't wanna do those end to Christmas lights at the same time.
Do the banners for next spring.
I'm gonna get them all set up this fall for next spring, at the same time, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and get David's lift for a week, that way I can do the after Christmas lights while I'm doing banners. All at the same time, so we're just doing all in one trip, right in time.
You're not putting back, you're just putting the brackets.
Putting brackets, putting the brackets out, getting ready.
Right, the brackets.
So that way next year it's down.
Better than this year.
Yep.
Perfect.
Anything else?
Good.
Okay.
My truck is back, Clayton's truck's in the shop, so. Now, when it comes back, then we'll get you done trucking my truck.
Does, does that light up on top, is that on all the time, the engine's running?
No.
You turn, you can turn it off and.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Okay, looks good.
Okay, Zach. Um, does, our letter went out to the state board accounts, our letter?
Yes.
You were copied on that, so, okay, just gonna make sure you saw that. Did you have to just put in clause packet the TIF report letter?
The, the RDC, yeah, everybody's got.
Yeah. Okay, so this is a, this is correspondence that goes to the, um, Allen County Attorney's Office. Uh, informing them that you intend to capture all the TIF and not return any of it back to the other taxi authorities. Um, and, you know, we, this is a statutory notice that we prepared before. Uh, I think Baker Tilly had been doing it maybe the last couple of years, but we did this one. Um, and what we said is we have outstanding bonds in place, um, so we do not intend to return any of the TIF back. So if you can sign that, I'll scan it and get it back to the auditor.
Okay.
Um, the last thing, I let you know that there was, um, the David Cole filed a objection to the.
Mm-hmm.
Sort of, um, extension project, um, he then most recently filed a motion to stay construction, meaning a motion to ask the court to stop the construction. Until the, until his objection to the permit that allowed the construction, um, could be determined. So, so there's two issues, he filed an objection that the permit be issued to allow the construction. And then just recently, he filed a motion to stop construction until that was decided, so on Friday, there was a hearing, a virtual hearing, um, in front of the administrative law judge. It went three hours.
Wow.
Um.
What?
Yeah, it was, uh, our, our, you know, from, someone from our firm and our environmental group handled the hearing, but Casey participated as a witness. And so did, um, Steve Iker was a witness.
Hmm, mm-hmm.
Um, and I get, it went very well, um, we're optimistic that the court will not stop construction. We don't have any worry yet, but we're optimistic. Um, and then there is a motion to dismiss his, um, objection to the permit being issued, which we still don't have a court order on yet either. But they just wanted to give you an update that that occurred on Friday. So, um. I don't know if you saw the email from Allen County Department of Planning, um, they reached out to Jerry Souter and talked about whether there should be a, a change to the zoning. If you remember, they, he, they came in and, and said that they were gonna change the, um, um. I, I, the name escapes me, it's not the master, the, the, the land use map, sorry, the land use map. And they were gonna, uh, change from industrial to residential, uh, or residential to industrial, and, and we said, well, talk to the property owner, see what they want. They did, they, the property owner does not wanna change, so there's gonna be no change to the land use map. So that's the list on that.
Okay. Okay. It's kinda what we thought, yeah.
Yeah, mm-hmm. Um. Last thing I have, um. The fire truck, so what we're going to put in place is what's called a, a bailment agreement. That is a, an agreement that allows someone to hold property for a certain amount of time, and then it establishes ownership's not being transferred, but it establishes who's liable for what, who's responsible for what. And so I sent Stephanie a list of, of information we need on the truck to be able to put that bailment agreement together, and we have that.
Did you send that this afternoon?
No, I sent it to you.
Sorry?
After you, um, said you wanted to talk about the.
Probably overlooked it.
Yeah, no, that's fine, honestly.
Um.
What, what, what information on the truck do you have currently?
So, I need clarification, because I had two titles in the office. One that's labeled, the owner is Grable Volunteer Fire Department, and that's for a fifty-eight Ford truck.
How?
And then I have the town of Grable's fifty-nine Ford truck.
So that's the same one. The town of Grable owns that truck.
But they're, it's shown, it's two different dates, two different, um, yeah, two different models, one's a C six hundred and the other one's an F six hundred.
Does it have the VIN on it?
I have the menu, yeah, yeah.
Are the bins the same?
No.
That's the concerning part.
It is the concerning part, so I don't, I.
It would have been easy. It's a nineteen fifty-eight Ford six hundred, or whatever that is, how a pumper. So we'll have to pull the VIN, whichever one's out there, and did we have any, did you guys ever have any fifty-nine? We don't have to pull out. Well, we could have, we could have, we could have back then, but it's a nineteen fifty-eight Ford pumper. The others would have had it been a tanker.
Yeah, I don't, I, it doesn't show any specifications of what.
All the other trucks, all, all the other trucks disappeared, the only ones, it's around is that nineteen fifty-eight bumper, so that's the one we want.
What it does, it just says. Uh.
It doesn't say how, it doesn't say anything else on it.
No, it, it's.
That would be all, just VIN number you have to go by.
I would just verify the VIN number, which is whatever's on the title, and that's the one we have. Yeah, we've logged it.
Yeah, I just need, whatever, whatever truck he's holding, I need all the information on that truck.
Okay.
I'll go and get all the information.
Okay.
Those are copies of the, the two different titles I had, hey, again, I didn't know which, which one it was, because. It didn't, I mean, it doesn't outline.
That's all. Okay. Okay, Stephanie. Vouchers.
Yep. So before you, I have the October eighth, twenty twenty-five council meeting vouchers totaling a hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and thirty-five, thirty-six. As well as the gross payroll for twenty, or sorry, September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five totaling five thousand nine hundred six dollars and fifty cents. And the October tenth, twenty twenty-five payroll totaling six thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Can I ask a question? You good, Wilmer? I'm good, I make a motion that we accept, uh, the account's payrolls, full payroll and the other. You have a second? One second then. Motion, Gary? Salary ordinance.
We were going to revisit after I gave you the appropriate information, um.
I think you have the, you're doing, um, the salary ordinance. No. Isn't that the, you showed us any of the calculations from everybody else's and.
I don't have it.
Well, I, so as far as the budget, you know, this is the first we got the paperwork.
Yeah.
And, uh, we, we can't, we can't okay anything on that until we go through the whole thing, you know, and then, uh, besides. Uh, you were supposed to contact, uh, Ross and give him information, you have not done that. And, um, so I contacted Ross. And as a counsel, we are going to use Baker Tilly as our CPA, that's our call, not yours. And you will feed the information to him, not through the council people, like you said, to hand it, we wanna pass it on to, that's your job to do that. And I am not gonna accept nothing on the budget till we got time to, to look at it, this is the first time we've had the paperwork on it. It was on the computer, but I ain't got time to sit there and do that stuff, I need this stuff here that I can go page to page, look at things over and, and, um. Besides, Baker Tilly cannot, they give us a budget for fifty-five thousand for next year. But their computer will not kick it in to give a contract, because you haven't paid the bill. And you owe fourteen thousand dollars, now why have you not paid that, it's seven months behind.
I understand, I was reviewing what I had already paid out versus what they were showing was outstanding.
For seven months it took you to do that?
Wilmer, I do more than just sit there and pump out bills every single.
Let me tell you something, we never had the problem before.
Okay, well.
And you, you will be on time with all the paperwork. And we're gonna find somebody else that can help do that work, and Baker Tilly will keep you on the ball. I'm not gonna go through another year of this stuff that we went through this year.
And moving forward, I will just continue on with Baker Tilly and I'll pass on all the responsibilities to them, and just, just as my predecessor did before me.
That's right, that's the way we want it.
Great.
That's the way we want it. We don't have a clue where we're at, we don't have a clue. You don't have nothing, you have no, showed us nothing of where you're at with anything. Now, it don't take seven months to write a check for fourteen thousand dollars. Now, if you, the funds aren't there, or something's wrong. And we need answers. We've went through this thing time again, time again, and here we are. What you painting, Jeff? I, I'm gonna, I gotta look at this. I do too. And I would still would have liked, I mean, it, it's all here in detail, but I would almost just. I, we, when, when we said before, we still would like to have it second checked by a CPA CPA. Mm-hmm. Which is what I think, I don't know how quickly or how much time it would take him to review this. Well, they won't, they won't do nothing until the bill's paid. Right, and I'm just saying, I don't know how much time, if, if a check was written tomorrow, we'd have to find out. Mm-hmm. How long it would take him, so we're not too bad off. Mm-hmm. To do a quick review for us. Mm-hmm. If it's on the computer, it should be something that should be able to forward into him and. And we don't wanna rip through it in a hurry, which I don't think he would even if we asked him to, because he's. No, he won't. Because he's gonna do what's right. Right.
And you will send the budget off to Ross tomorrow?
I mean, I, I forwarded to all of you to pass on to him and.
No, that's not us tomorrow, that's on, that's your responsibility to pass it on. For some reason, you don't wanna talk to him. What is it?
I, I didn't need, I felt I didn't need his. Input to do my job.
I'm not the clerk treasurer, Claude's not, Jeff's not, it's your responsibility, it's been that way for thirty-four years that I've been on here. The clerk worked with the CPA, not the council members. That's your responsibility.
I think what we're saying is we want a CPA firm to back you up on what you're doing.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you're doing okay, but to me, I would, if I was a clerk treasurer, I would want them to be there behind me.
I mean, I, I don't mind them being there, but I'm not gonna call them at every. I mean, I, I don't mind them being there, but I'm not going to call them at every, every beck and order. That's, that's not how I want to do my job.
Well, you're gonna do your.
And before me, everything was scanned over, transposed, and Baker Tilly was doing the job for the clerk treasurer.
At least.
And I, I don't.
When you go to, when you go to court, they're going to be there to back you. That's what we're, that's what we want them there for you. So, for us something, at least they're the ones that are going to answer to the, to the authorities on it. We, we can't, we can't operate this way. It's just the way we know, right? I, I can't even sleep at night knowing, I don't have a clue what's going on. Never had that before. We always had information that was laid in front of us, we could see it. And the bills were paid on time, and then that bill has to be paid tomorrow.
Sorry, it's, it's in your ledgers.
Okay. All right. Water credit, Hoosier Street. Seed, one seeding repair.
Yeah.
What shows up for, um,
I don't know, I don't know what his excessive usage will be.
Excessive usage? Okay.
Um, he's trying to get ahead of, head of the cart asking for a watering credit.
Okay.
Um, he's had a lot of extensive work done to his property as well as the grass itself, and he's out there multiple times a day watering, reseeding, et cetera.
So, we'll just need to see when that bill comes in.
Okay.
And then like the average or whatever would be and I know he's asking to apply for sewage, I don't think.
That's what we credit.
Yeah, it's, it's the sewage we do and.
Just so we're gonna dig a hole right now in one of those, these grassy.
We found a missing man holes right in the grass.
No, you're not.
Yeah, we are. He buried the man hole.
We'll take it out nice and neat, we'll put it right back once we get our pictures. Don't worry about it.
Yeah, there's a man hole.
Sounds like him.
He may know a little bit, but.
He'll know, he'll know.
One more missing, we have four missing manuals in the home.
When are you doing that?
They gotta have it open for the.
They're not going back there.
Oh, they're not going to line that one?
No.
Oh, okay.
We're going to for our GPS system, so. We'll, we'll take it out nice and, circle it back.
Give them a heads up, the day, give them the heads up the day before or something.
Yeah, we got a flag up there right now, let it know it's, it's coming.
I said, like, he just, he just watered all this, removed all this grass.
If we dig it out and put it right back, it should, it should be fine.
I know. Maybe out there at three in the morning. Then we have two quotes for the Parks Department, uh, for paving, uh, the, at the South, South Park, uh, paving the parking area, uh, ripping up existing asphalt, removing, leveling it off, uh, and, uh, resurfacing the hot asphalt. Um, forty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. The other quote we had was sixty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. Reason for that is there's a lot of stone that gets kicked into the drainage as well as looks and much nicer approach to the, uh, Parks facilities.
It'll be easier to keep clean for renters in the winter too.
Yeah.
They can plow it and blow it off.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
I agree, it needs done. I'll see if the funds are there, why, go for it. Just seal it and who was the other one?
Asphalt maintenance, I believe.
Asphalt care.
Asphalt care.
Yeah.
But they can't do it till next year. Uh, Robert can get it done hopefully here in the next couple of weeks.
My understanding there is funds available for that in the park, is that correct?
I have, I have it in the budget for next year, um. Originally, you and I had talked about the forty, I believe it's forty-two that's in the budget
Mm-hmm.
for the Parks Department, but I have extra funds spread out like in Riverboat, uh, rainy day fund, general fund that we can apply to the paving at the South Park. So, I'm not limited just to that forty-two that is in there because I, what, what's presented as the budget, I can't alter.
Right.
Where.
But rainy day funds and so on can be kicked around in various locations.
And then, I mean, worst case, we do an additional appropriation, so.
Reappropriing.
Okay.
That we need in, for additional appropriation, is that an ordinance?
It's.
It, yeah, it, it's, it's a, you have to publish notice and have, and it's an additional appropriation ordinance, but it's, it's, it wouldn't be for now. I mean, it would be for if you're deviating from the budget for next year.
So, if we wanted to take something, if she wants to have this done now, like in the next two or three weeks
Oh.
and there's not enough there.
Yeah.
I, I don't have that put in there, we would have to.
Yeah.
Right, but I thought she said that she had like a couple, line two hundred or something, a couple of different places that she had enough to cover all that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what she told me.
Mm-hmm.
Which if she's got enough to cover it and she can prove she can cover it.
Do it, go for it.
Yeah.
Come on, boy.
Now's the time to do it, like wait next year, is the price going to go up?
Everything is. So, Stephanie, you think you can, there's.
Well, I mean, if, i- if it's not outlined that it's for paving or if it's not outlined for improvements, I can't just, we would have to do an additional appropriation to funnel all of those funds into a paving, which would create us to have to re-advertise, et cetera. It may, there, there very well may be forty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars in there. But if it's not just in the improvements or building materials, et cetera, I can't, I, I can't, my hands are tied.
Yeah. So, we need, just need to look at, does she get copies of the park board or does she have a copy of the park board budget that shows how much is in each line item or?
For twenty-five, yes.
Okay, so she'd have that too.
How much was spent in each item?
It shows what, what the funds are as of current date.
Current.
Is what I gave her.
Well, she thought she had enough to take care of that without having to re-appropriate it.
So, do we make a motion pending proper fu- or funding in the proper line items that we can allow that?
Yeah, but you could approve that it's subject to sufficient funds within the budget that are appropriated for that.
Appropriated for.
Because in an additional appropriation is needed, you, you would, you know, that's, and you, you can't accept that or she, you, you're gonna have to publish a hearing, or you have to publish notes for, uh, additional appropriation hearing and have a, an additional appropriation ordinance passed.
But with that, we wouldn't have to re-quote this or anything, would we? Just because we're moving money around, I mean, we don't have to re-quote that, no.
No. Well, I don't know how long that bid is open for or that quote is open for.
Well, when are we gonna wind up?
A couple.
Yeah, you gotta show us.
We're just getting it done.
That was from September tenth. So, basically it there.
Mm-hmm.
Cause I know they both was, like Eric said, if one guy could get to it now, that guy would have to wait anyway.
Yeah.
So, it'll basically come down to this guy if we had to do an appropriations.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I would make that motion and I'd like to just say I'd make a motion on what he just said, but I'll.
You say. We make most of the, the quote contingent upon there being available funds and adequately appropriated.
Sufficient funds available. Yeah, line, line one or line item appropriated for this particular type of work. Or just seal it.
Or would.
You're going to reappropriate either way, right?
Not if it's in a general li- in a general line item like that.
Well, she's.
In a general. If it's, again, if it's in park improvements, I don't have to do anything with it. Now, if there's ten that comes out of
Building materials.
building materials and there's ten that comes out of landscaping and there's, you know, then, yes, I'm gonna have to list all of those
Reappropriate the line items.
those line items, how much I'm taking from each of those and where it's getting funded to.
Yeah, yep.
So, it's, I mean.
Which I'm assuming is going to happen, have to have it.
I, I can almost guarantee it's going to be an additional appropriation.
That's not, that's not big, that's almost going to have to happen.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know if my computer's up to get into it right now, but I can al- I can almost guarantee.
Okay.
That's what I was getting, it's almost, you're almost going to start that now.
So, that means we almost wait until next spring because you already have the appropriated in the budget for this.
Yeah.
She, she told me today she lives, uh, line item two hundred or something.
Yeah, line item two hundred.
The money's there to do it.
Place listing showing it was there.
Now, what, what is that about?
It's whatever line item two hundred is, if it's just, if that's just general or what it is.
If it's there, let's get it done. It just costs a lot more money if we wait.
It's tearing up the drain. They're getting stones all the way down into their drains because it flows that way.
Sure, really?
Yeah. Not me to tell you guys. I didn't realize it was that bad because I'm, I also tried to, I said, why don't you just wait till all new asphalt next spring?
Yeah.
No, she said in the winter it's horrible with having to keep stuff cleaned off for people, cause I mean, think about it, I guess
Stone.
we can have, we can have snow November, December.
Oh, yeah.
And it could be a mess for a long time, I understand and like Wilmer said, it, it's either going to go way higher, just a little higher, it's going to go up.
Mm-hmm.
No, we're, we're gonna have to do an additional appropriation.
We could probably get, see, so the notice has to be in ten days before the hearing and the next meeting's the twenty-ninth?
All right. Oh, well.
Just three weeks, so.
Yeah, we would, we could get something published next week and have it published ten days prior to.
You know.
Stephanie came.
Actually, that's twenty-second, I think.
Twenty-ninth and we'll be back.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
Thank you, my friend.
Yeah, we'll be back this early in the day.
Tom's sitting up front of the picnic table in a little second.
He can hear by himself.
Let's call the guy to watch.
While we. Need a motion to accept this bid. Um, if we have to, national appropriation, you can do that at the next meeting, if that's what I would do. And. Okay.
Yeah, that's not what we're, that we're going to be looking at because they're, they can't do it till next year, so, you know. And you know him?
Hmm?
Is that the idea? Yeah, you know.
Yeah, he does some, uh.
Yeah, you can at least let him know, see if that's going to be a major conflict for him.
What's that? Push it off to next year?
No, no, no.
No.
Get his.
How late is going to be too late for him to do this?
He's sooner better.
Right.
Yeah.
So, better.
They can't do anything on the twenty-ninth hit for a year.
So, by the end of August.
It will be this for you for next, next year.
Try and get it done before the first week in November then?
Yeah.
Well.
It'd have to be the first week in November because we're not going to know until the twenty-ninth.
Of course. The asphalt companies, they shut down at a certain time.
I'll ask the guys tomorrow, will you shut down asphalt companies in the last year? When you get in your first week of November then?
Yeah, I mean, if we have to shut it off till next year, it's fine, but if we can do it this year, it's going to save us money, it's not a lot.
Until Thanksgiving?
They were almost in December last week.
Yeah. Okay, any other, you could use comments?
I'm good.
Good one?
Good.
Has she else got, Stephanie? Nope. Need your.
Hey, sir.